This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is August 31st, 2020. This is the meeting of the planning board at 6:06 PM. And we are meeting virtually via video conference pursuant to orders from the Governor Cuomo regarding the coronavirus pandemic and Village Hall is closed and not accessible to the public. Notice for this meeting is posted on the website and the notice includes a link that the public may use to connect to this meeting and observe our deliberations. So with that said, I will make a motion to open the meeting noting that all five planning board members are present.
Okay.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. On the record show, all five planning board members voted in favor of opening the meeting. Okay, so I think our first discussion, the brief discussion on meeting minutes. Justin, you want to go on the record? Justin, Joanne, I think you had some amendments.
Sure.
On the minutes of June 15th, page two, under temporary permits, we should probably say that the PZBA board not hear temporary permits.
So zoning board?
Yeah.
So zoning board does temporary permits. So instead of board, say zoning board of appeals?
Sure.
Okay, and in the same paragraph, the last sentence, it should be sounds with an S at the end of it.
Okay. Are you taking notes for these changes so that they can be sent to our secretary, Justin?
Yep, I will do that after this meeting and CCU.
Thank you.
Do you want her to amend these and include it with the packet for the next meeting so we can vote or not necessarily?
If people are okay with them, we could vote now.
Yeah, I am. I'm reading.
Good.
Okay. Um. So there were two separate meeting minutes included. June 15th was the first one. I'm sorry, no. Was it? Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, June 15th is the first. Justin, do you want to make the motion?
Oh, Dave, did you have a chance to, do you want to, that's the one where we talked about temporary permits. I remember Mr. Marshall had a fair amount to say about that. I didn't know if you had any, if the wording captured your sentiments and thoughts actually in there.
Yeah, it was sufficient.
Okay. I don't think we came to any clear actions. It was just a discussion, so there may be more to come and it's the trustees that have to change things anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, so if everyone's good, I'll make a motion to adopt the June 15 minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, let's record show, all five members of the planning board voted to approve the amended June 15 minutes. Okay, do you want to go over the next minute?
Yes, and actually I had one minor correction there too. Oh, it was just in the typo in the prepared statement at the top. There's a stray "and we're meeting" if you look at the beginning of the second sentence there.
All right, well, you could take notes.
Just cross that out or something. I will, yeah.
Is there any other notes in that meeting?
I don't have any other notes.
I didn't have any.
Okay, well, if that's the only change, I'll make a motion to what's the date of the minutes?
July 20th, 2020.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the July 20th, 2020 minutes as amended. Is everyone else okay with adopting these now? We can always defer it if you want.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I'll wait a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like another, the record show was another unanimous vote. Okay. I have something we can go over regarding our discussion. So first of all, to catch everyone up to date, after our attorney-client session, to get advice from our attorney Mindy, I gave the mayor a heads up and let him know that we'd be sending him some correspondence. And he said, oh, did someone contact you regarding the joint meeting? And I said, no, I hadn't heard you requested a joint meeting. So he had requested one for the same date that we had already scheduled one, which was Thursday, September 3rd. And he said he would send around a email stating it was his intent to extend the timeframe for LWRP review. And I guess we haven't seen that, but this email he sent around said he wanted to have a discussion on Thursday about extending that. So when he called me, he proposed 7:00 PM for the meeting. I said, one planning board member can't attend at 7:00, so we scheduled it for 5:00 and suggested he see if the trustees are okay with 5:00. Apparently, one isn't, but apparently it's scheduled for 5:00 for the time being. So, so that's the background.
I mean, isn't, isn't this a trustee decision whether to extend it or not? I'm not quite sure why we're involved.
Yeah, you have a point there. That's their decision if they want to do it. And I didn't, I presumed he wanted to talk about this plan and maybe respond to some of our comments, but I don't know. I gave him a call on Friday as a courtesy so that he could schedule a meeting of the trustees before our vote on Thursday, so they could discuss what they wanted to do. So their meeting, I guess, Thursday as well.
I mean, you know, I looked at Renee's reply and that was, you know, pretty clear that she would be willing to talk about extending the deadline, but not, but not anything relating to our comments.
Yeah, agreed. I'm left in kind of a quandary here of not knowing what to do. It looks like the trustees have not gotten into this significantly and aren't going to get into this significantly. And we're running up against a timeline. And we kind of had two courses of action that are possible pursuant to advice we received from our attorney Mindy Zoglin. And I guess we, if we get a time extension, that's fine, that could postpone this. Or we could take action anyway. I think that's up to us. I'm not sure if anyone had any new thoughts as to which of our two courses of action we should possibly pursue.
My personal thought is, I kind of like the idea of saying, hey, you've, you know, at least as we've talked about in our prior meetings, it's pretty inconsistent, but we recognize it's for the greater good. But I also kind of like the idea, if we can, of creating our findings tonight and then not voting on it until possibly Thursday, so have a scheduled vote for Thursday, maybe after the meeting with the trustees, 6 o'clock or something effectively. And so I think they're granting themselves an extension to get back to us. And so effectively, the applicant is asking us through their own doing of granting an extension, their willingness to tell us that they're going to make modifications and get back to us. I don't think we need to tell them how to make those modifications. I mean, we've given them a lot of detail already. And I don't think we need to talk it through too much unless they wonder what we meant by something, right? And, and if they give themselves an extension, I'm okay tabling the vote and waiting for the applicant to come back and tell us what they're going to change. That's my thought.
Yes, okay. I have taken a stab at filling, putting some of our findings into resolution form. If we want to quickly go through those tonight, I don't think they're going to, it's going to take very long to do that. We don't need to vote on any of this tonight, obviously. We'll leave our two courses of action, I think basically the only difference between them would be adding an additional whereas paragraph. And if we want to add that additional one, we can do that and are ready to adopt it. Does that seem fair enough?
That's to me.
What, and what would be the meat of that whereas? Is that the one where?
Talking about the project does public good and is generally beneficial, or whatever that language needs to be.
Okay. Right.
I think it'd be, it could be as simple as, we, the planning board, recognize the project to be and then put sort of that line. And if they go discover what they can do with that line, then good for them. But if not, at least we're, we recognize it's a good thing. It's just, it's not consistent.
Okay, well, let's, we'll have that debate whether to add that or not later. I, my personal thought at the moment, man, I could walk a fucking four feet, but we really need to hear what the trustees intend to do. If they're going to make changes, great. That makes our job a lot easier. We don't need to make any immediate decision. If they're not willing to make changes, then we have to do a little more thinking. But I'm wondering if a bolder statement from us would possibly have some influence on the town or even on county planning. And county planning, if we sent findings to them, they could impose on DOT to do a little more. Maybe that's wishful thinking. I don't know.
I just had a question, which might be a Mindy question too, but in our code, it seems like if we find that there's no overriding public benefit, it's possible that a, an action doesn't have to be considered consistent with the LWRP. I was looking in state law and it says that instead of being an or about any one of those conditions, they actually have four conditions, the fourth being the action will result in overriding regional or statewide public benefit. And all of those conditions have to be met, so they're joined with an and. And I was wondering if our law supersedes that, or if it's actually, we have to go by the state law, which says you have to meet all these conditions, so no reasonable alternatives exist. The action will minimize all adverse effects, the action will advance one or more of the other coastal policies, and the action will result in an overriding regional or statewide public benefit. So that would, that would be my question, I guess, before we use that.
Well, you gotta, our code doesn't put an and/or an or in there. It just says.
But you see what I'm saying? I mean, that's almost identical to what our code says, if I recall. And these are clearly joined with a conjunction.
Can you post those two links if you, is that easy to do?
Yeah, it's NYCRR. Let me and maybe I'm not even looking at relevant code here from the state law. It's, I'll find the reference and put it into the chat bar in just a minute.
Okay.
Well, Mindy came up with the idea of mentioning that and came up with the idea that it was a surroundable thing. I wonder if that was based on experience or specific analysis of the codes. My guess is it's probably experience, meaning she's seen it done before.
So I don't know if she's been involved in other municipalities LWRP reviews before, but I think she was looking at the code and I think she made some comments that she didn't like how this section was worded.
Yeah.
So anyway, this is the PDF, and if you go through there, you'll see the enumeration that I'm talking about, I think.
Okay.
What's NYCRR stand for? Coastal Resources, maybe?
New York Civil Law or something like that.
There it is, New York Code's Rules and Rights. Got it.
Okay, am I allowed to share my screen? I think I need permission from our organizer.
Okay, let me fix that right now. That should do it.
What screen is it sharing? Wrong one, I think. How do I change this?
You can stop sharing and then share an application window.
I'll stop sharing. Screen.
And I think there are going to be two screen or applications. There's a tab, two tabs at the top for me. Go to applications, then select the app you want to share, or just make that full screen.
Okay. I've made this bigger. Is it legible to people?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a section of code that was being discussed.
Could you make that a little bigger or can I? Oh, here we go. I got, I got it.
Sorry about that. It's a lot of noise.
So does anyone think that we can claim B?
Actually, it would be undertaken.
No. Click, click, going which way?
So this one here. So the A and B, it looks like this is our problem is we're asking them to improve the handling of this. So if this is an and, we got to do all of these. D could be argued. C, actually, are there any things that will be advanced? You could maybe make an argument for that, but if all four of these have to be done and A and B aren't done, or even just B, then that's kind of.
I think all of those could be met, quite honestly.
And I might be wrong. This might only be for state actions as I'm looking at the NYCRR here. But it's just suspicious it's the same. I, I don't know. It seems like.
Well, it does not have or in these, so if it needs to meet all four of them, and that's the norm. Anyway, we can get to that at another time. And maybe that's a good question for Mindy as to whether it needs to meet all four of those, or one of those, or whether we need to look at that further. So, but anyway. Going through this document here, let's see if we can go through this fairly quickly. I don't know if three is the correct number or not, but this is just boilerplate stuff. We received an application. I believe these are the five documents we've received that are significant. The coastal assessment form, the environmental assessment form, the plan dated January 2019, supplement dated July 13, 2020, and their referral resolution, which is dated July 15, 2020. So there's just a couple. Oh, it's not an unlisted action, it's a type one action. So these are essentially our findings, and what I was proposing doing is for each of these 14 or 15 things, writing a sentence or two, and then our document that we previously did last Monday, appending it after everything. That's what I was thinking of doing. So let me see if I can fit this all on the screen here, if you can see this. So one.
Justin?
Yep.
In the, before you get to one, the last sentence that I somehow can't it says waterfront impacts. I think it should be broader than that. So I'm, I'm wondering about waterfront, like.
We could just say consistency review.
Oh, yeah. All right, that does it too. Thanks. Okay.
121 by G. It's a, okay, regarding policy standards and conditions and design guidelines.
Yeah.
Anyway, this explains what they are. We cited it.
Yep. Okay.
So this is the, so these are the 15 items, I believe. I copied them verbatim out of here. I recycled this resolution from whatever we did from the town for our last one. For the, the.
Barn.
Trail and barn, yeah. Well, the first one here was the design guidelines, efficient use of infrastructures, beneficial use of waterfront location, and so on. And so this is what I stuck in here initially, finding it's inconsistent with this policy because I just mentioned C attached citations and recommendations. Maybe we need to put a proper name in here. The plan does not adequately provide for improved access to the canal and does not adequately provide improved canal corridor amenities as described in the LWRP is what I put in there. Does anyone have any amendments or thoughts?
No. Maybe this is just one point to reiterate my question that we had had previously, which is, is the, is the absence of something creating a hindrance to the success of the LWRP and is it inconsistent as a result of it, not as a result of it failing to address it? And I think we've all come to the agreement to say that that is true, because this is specifically an active transportation plan, which should be addressing connectivity to the waterways in a greater way. So the absence of it is, is a fault. Whereas the absence of that connectivity for other plans in the LWRP area would not necessarily be held to that same standard.
Well, this also says that it must enhance community character. Makes beneficial use of the waterfront location. I guess, as you said, there was a complete omission for anything related to the waterfront. And I remember when we discussed the LWRP, it said in there that any consistent new work must advance some of these.
Yeah.
These proposals. That was in the LWRP document itself. So by reading our, that own document, omission is not following it.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that we had agreed on that.
Is there any other thoughts in that topic?
No, I agree with that statement, and I think that it, it seems clear that comprehensive planning overall is supposed to be something that evolves over time. So I think that even documents like the ATP can be maybe considered as, as part of a comprehensive plan. And I'm concerned that if we go, if we've got something like the LWRP, which is also kind of part of the community's comprehensive plan, and then subsequent documents omit important things there, we could be at risk of, of losing that entirely. So I think it's important to keep drawing that out.
Yep. I agree.
Okay. We'll leave this for now. If we're done with this document, we'll circulate a draft around. I'm not expecting to adopt anything tonight. So if anyone has future changes, we, that's fair game. Okay, the next bunch of these are, I think, are a bunch of not applicable things. So we have protect water dependent uses. I'm saying it's consistent. It's basically not applicable.
Why? I think you should say not applicable then.
Okay. So what do you propose we put for this? Just say not applicable?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty simple. Three, I think that's basically the same. Four, again, is that not applicable? I believe it's been our finding.
Yeah.
Leave this text in there. Change it. Any thoughts?
Why not just say are not impacted? Why say adversely?
Well, I guess one of the things, I was wondering how to do that. We don't know the stormwater impacts on this. That's the I could say not not impacted. Is that what you want?
Well, if we're saying this isn't, if this isn't applicable, and then we make a judgment, it sounds like it is applicable. So.
So I guess deleted that sentence. Does that sound better? Or just delete this whole sentence? I can delete all the findings.
I think there's nothing wrong with just NA. I think the more explanatory you get, in my experience, the.
Do you want to get rid of the description for the other ones as well?
What do you, what do Joanne and Justin and Dave, what do you guys think?
Is this still, so I think the reason for keeping in some of this description is to show that we did our homework. Are we still going to have documented in a separate document that we actually went through these considerations and what we were thinking?
I, so let me scroll through this. So we have findings on these 14 or 15 items. Then what's in here is whatever our resolution is right now, I have consistent or inconsistent. We haven't reached their determination yet. And then after it, I was putting this document of all the considerations that we had edited previously. So apparently this is our title for this document. So I can cite that above. I think I had cited it once. So if I scroll back up. Number one. Okay. So that document is identical to four. Is that answer your question?
I think so. Yeah, it's just a matter of stating our findings and showing that we diligently went through all the considerations. So then the resolution can be concise. And we just say NA.
And don't forget our meeting minutes show our record as well.
Yep.
Okay, so. I guess I'm okay either way, just saying NA or putting a one or two sentence description next to NA. Either one's okay with me.
Well, okay, so I'm good with two and three.
Yeah, they seem fine to me, too.
If I could put something similar for four.
What do we think is alive in the canal?
Not anything I'd want to come face to face with.
It was such a beautiful day today. The sky was so blue. As I walked across the North Main Bridge, the canal looked like pea soup.
It's just too warm. I hear you complaining that it's not 12 degrees where you can have it a different color. So anyway, moving on, we can just put a sentence saying, again, for this one, that they do not significantly impact ecological resources, wildlife. Impact ecological resources and wildlife. Should we say LWRP area or waterfront area?
LWRP.
Okay, do you want to just leave it with this first sentence? Or do you want to leave any part of these two sentences in here?
I would just leave the first sentence.
Okay.
But.
Is that? Oh, it says consistency. Oh, we, it's supposed to be not applicable. Not applicable. Not applicable. So ecological resources is not applicable. Water resources not applicable. I can just say significantly. There could be minor impacts from putting in a new sidewalk, but I think we agreed that's pretty minor. Or, you know, runoff and stormwater and so on. But in percentage with the amount of existing stormwater that's there, it would be minuscule.
Quick question for you. So on all these items that are not applicable, and we're saying they're not applicable because the plan doesn't pertain. Do we need to make a comment in number one, that our expectation of the ATP would be to address these considerations? And as a result of not doing so, it fails? And again, I'm just coming back to this whole, the omission thing, right? Number four, five, and six, anything happening in the LWRP area, we expect to promote sustainable uses, but we're giving it a nonapplicable pass.
Well, we're saying, the wording here is it does not provide for improved access to the canal and does not apply for improved canal corridor amenities. So. Which is true. It's if proposing leaving them the same. Do you want to put another sentence in there that says that the clear intent of the LWRP was to advance access and canal corridor amenities for, as part of major construction and plans?
I think I'd go the other way, which is the major intent of the ATP is to provide connectivity within the region, and the failure to do so is why it's inconsistent in the LWRP. It, the expect, I guess what I'm saying is, there's an expectation that it would have done this, which is why it fails to do it. And, and so if we're giving a pass on all these other things, I think we have to state with number one, why there's an expectation for it to be addressed. Rather than just saying you fail by omission, specifically state, you know, some sentence that it's the point of the ATP to do this, by not doing it, you are inconsistent because it would have been expected. I, maybe some may disagree with that. I just feel like I have a hard time giving a whole bunch of nonapplicables to these other things and not saying why this one we're not. And I agree, it shouldn't. And I agree that it's inconsistent. I just want to make sure that we're telling them why.
I think it's a good thing to make this paragraph stronger. I agree.
Yeah, and I would take out adequately.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Right, right. I think the sentence is good so far.
I mean, emission of what? The omission of canal connectivity. Is what?
Well, so I think we might find some argument from somebody saying what the purpose of the ATP is. So not that it isn't that.
Could say one of the goals of the.
A primary purpose or a primary goal, the primary goal of the ATP, maybe. That way they can't kind of wordsmith us out of it. But instead of the purpose of the ATP, just say something.
Let's just take something from the ATP.
Yeah, that's what I think we should do. We could, I could just say C, I mean, C's attached citations, but I'm browsing through the document to see if we have.
Yeah. Here it is. Okay. It was right on the first page or something, isn't it? Second page.
The ATP does say canal amenities, or the LWRP says that they shall be improved. That's in policy 1.5. Over.
I think we should be citing the ATP here.
ATP or LWRP?
ATP. And this part that is talking about, if you're going to be talking about the purpose of the ATP, a purpose or goal, then I think you should cite the ATP.
Okay.
Here's from the introduction, it says, "The Pittsburgh Active Transportation Plan aims to develop a thorough strategy." Thorough is a key word, "to guide the future of active transportation in both the town and village." I skipped the first couple of words in that sentence. I can paste it in here.
What page are you on?
It's the introduction, page one, first paragraph, last sentence. Building on this strong ledger, legacy of the past and present. So just start after that comma.
Okay.
Funny, the second sentence here is about the bustling canal path, but then they drop the ball.
So which word is this? They said page one, the citation is?
Yeah. On, right at the end of the first paragraph.
Right. So if it's saying it's a thorough strategy, we would presume it to include the canal and connectivity per the ATP LWRP guidelines. Therefore, it is not thorough and thus inconsistent. Yeah, I think.
And this goes back to one of the points that I was making earlier, too. If they just said this, this plan is limited, and it didn't claim to be thorough, then it might not be inconsistent.
Possibly.
If they said we don't talk about the canal, but that's, that's the problem.
I, they can't say, they can't not talk about the canal. And.
They say, they talk about the canal path again on page three. Under the village vision.
Why don't you flip these two sentences around? Start out with per page one. This is what the Active Transportation Plan is supposed to do, and then say, "The plan does not provide for improved access." So just switch the order of those two sentences.
Okay, I'll leave this CD attached considerations, or should I not?
Yeah, leave, you could, yep, leave that and then just switch around.
See attached.
Started per page one. So take the beginning of the last sentence, per page one.
Yep.
And put it up to the top.
It is right now.
Okay, then, yeah, we can delete it below now, right?
Yep.
And then.
Yeah. Now delete that, yeah.
Yeah, you don't need to.
Relevant citations.
And comments.
And comments.
Take that sentence and put it at the end.
Yeah.
Yep. That's good. Let's see.
All right.
And then, all right, yep, so that goes to the end. And then I would even say, so start that at paragraph one. Or that sentence one's good. I for sentence two would probably say something such as the expectation, or our expectation.
Requirement.
Yeah. The board's expectation of a thorough strategy. Right? Would would, and then delete the plan does not. The board's expectation of a thorough strategy.
Well, do we? I was just thinking, it's not really our expectation. It's the, I would, I would leave it as it was and just say that this is a requirement, a required policy in the LWRP. It's not us, it's the document. It's the community that built the LWRP that dictates that we do that.
Yes, but I guess what I was trying to draw attention to is the fact that because this is being stated as a thorough plan, then we as the board would determine it to be applicable to discussing connectivity to the canal. And therefore, this standard applies, which it failed to do. So I guess I'm trying to draw attention to again, why we can ding it for not doing something. Right? And that's where I was trying to say our expectation or I don't know, something to that effect.
I think I agree with what you're saying. You know, we do want to call out why we're filing it on these grounds. But it's not really a discretionary thing. It's, it's very clear in the LWRP that these are the rules that we have to play by. That it says that this is a required policy and it just doesn't follow it. Which is, I guess, why.
Why not just put however in front of the plan? In front of.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
I like that. It draws, yeah.
Can we change the end of that instead of as described in the LWRP? Can we just say as required by LWRP policies? It goes beyond just describing it.
Yeah.
Or just, or per, yeah.
Okay.
Whichever, yeah.
So you want to delete this?
Instead of seeing as described, we would just say. Instead of seeing as described, we would just say per the LWRP.
Or you can delete it altogether.
Yeah, well, we say the LWR that we have this other sentence here that stipulates access and connectivity must be improved.
Yeah, you could either combine those two and just say as required by the LWRP. Or just say, or just delete that part, I guess. It's fine with the sentence after it.
Yeah, there, I think short sentences are okay. Sometimes combining them into a longer sentence isn't always helpful.
Yeah, second sentence, the word does should be do.
Yeah, which plans? Why is it plural?
Because up above I'm noting, we receive this and this has dates. Okay, and I'm calling these the plans with capital P.
Yeah, but we're only, we're only determining.
The ATP.
The ATP.
It's all considered one plan and they've only forwarded this one plan. So I'm okay changing the plans to the ATP everywhere.
So just, just. We, we received the following documents.
Yep, and says, we should maybe put something else or recall the ATP, the plan.
So put it in back of the January 2019.
Yeah, just put a little parentheses with E P.
And maybe even the supplement.
And then, oh, right, gotcha. Do you just want to say that the okay, so you're including both of those needs to be there.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or combine them in two bullet points, the Pittsburgh Active Transportation Plan 2019 and July 13 supplement.
I would do that.
By the ATP.
I like that.
Yep. Yep. Could you also put or the plan after ATP, just in case we have plans somewhere?
Yep.
Anytime we reference the plan, we know it's these two settings.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so I can look and see where we have plan. Oh, good lord.
It doesn't matter much because now the plan is going to get picked up by everything. Yeah, that's okay to be the plans. All right. Yeah, run five, so.
All right, let's just, we'll make these quick fixes here. And we haven't gotten to those. So again, we're working on this one. The plan. Now we're putting those do to does.
Yep.
That's good.
You want an ellipsis before the Pittsburgh Active Transit, at the beginning of that quote, because the sentence doesn't start there. After the open quotation mark, an ellipsis, yeah.
Three dots are called an ellipsis.
I don't know, may get me wrong. That's called it.
I call them three dots.
I've never heard lips. I like it though.
Yeah, it's called an ellipsis.
Now, this is again a question for number three or the third sentence of number one. So the LWRP stipulates that access and connectivity must be improved. And the LWRP also stipulates that we need to improve water resources or protect ecological resources. So why specifically, again, does the LWRP stipulate? Why does this apply? And I think we should either draw attention to an expectation or do we leave it alone and let the however do all the work for us that Susan, you had suggested we put in? Or take it out entirely. I'm okay taking that third sentence out.
How about if you put addressed instead of improved?
Sure, I'm okay with that.
That canal, Erie Canal access and connectivity must be addressed.
Yes. Because they could have deferred everything back to the LWRP and made it clearly intended to not address that which should have been addressed, but right.
So here is where I'm taking this from. Canal corridor shall be maintained and improved. So it does say the canal corridor amenities must be improved.
Well, why not just?
The same for access.
Can we just quote that sentence?
Oh, yeah.
So you draw the two, that's pretty concise. Then you draw the two things together.
Yeah, that's good.
Amenities. Maintained. So, okay, so I have a hard time with that sentence just because it says maintained. The ATP is not doing anything to build new. It's not, it's just simply maintaining what's already there by not doing anything.
Okay, so we just keep the improved part.
Yeah.
Well, it's maintained and improved.
Okay, again, I, we're not asked, I just, I have a hard time because of, it's that omission thing again, right? We're not going to ask them to, in number four, promote living marine resources. And so, so because they're not building new roadways or new transportation plans, I mean, it's a transportation plan. So our expectation is that they would at least address it and improve it. So that's where that however, Susan, I'm still going to go back to, and I'm okay with it based on that alone.
Yeah, well, it is a transportation plan, not a marine resources plan as well.
Exactly. And I just want to make sure we draw attention to that. And that's why it's going to fail on that ground. I mean, this is probably the most important paragraph that we put down. Right?
Yeah, that's right.
How, I don't know how the citation should work in here.
You could probably leave it alone just with your reference to the, see relevant resources at the end.
I think there's probably some other ones. Let's see.
Justin, just to jump in, I don't think you'd want to keep referencing within our findings. I think you just push that all to the end so that people read through that.
Get rid of this?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, we know which document this is.
Right? Well, that, that quote is already in the planning board ATP considerations per LWRP that's attached, right? So it's already there. Do we, do we want to quote it again? I guess. Yeah, that's fine. Maybe, I don't know, over quoting isn't a bad thing.
So let's see where some other ones connect.
Yeah, that first sentence in nine two. Proposed projects within the LWRP boundary will preserve and improve connections to important open, well, it's open space assets, I guess.
Trail system will be expanded to provide these connections. Maybe I can just do some examples.
Instead of just giving a couple of examples here, I wonder if we could combine those two things together from the two different policies. And then just kind of put those in the middle of the paragraph as a citation of the LWRP. The goal is to bring these two things together. And let's see, we've got, so we've got the sentence from the ATP and we say, however, it does not provide. I was saying after where we say the LWRP stipulates. Or we could, we could even just say the LWRP says, quote, amenities must be, canal amenities must be improved, end quote, and connections must be improved or something.
Must be improved.
You say the LWRP stipulates that access and connectivity must be improved.
Yeah.
Great setup.
Yeah.
Yeah, all I'm really saying is you could just tweak that sentence a little bit and put quotes around a couple of parts of it to show that it literally is what the LWRP says, but I guess that's not necessary either. Maybe it's enough just to leave it as it is and.
And when we have the, we have the citations. So maybe a we can just say the, the failing to review and address specific recommendations in the LWRP is a fatal flaw of the Active Transportation Plan. I don't know. I don't know how we want to word that.
I think finding it inconsistent says that.
I think this is pretty.
We can just say the some amendments to the LWRP are, well, we already said we have recommendations in here. I don't know.
Yeah, I just leave it. Tell them to go read our notes.
Q E D.
If anyone has any amendments to this, by all means. Okay, so where were we?
Five, six now.
Okay, five, six.
So for all of these, our expectation is that it doesn't address these things. And that's why it's not inconsistent because it wasn't expected.
Yes, the, the purpose of the transportation plan is not to improve water.
Correct.
Say that.
No, I don't think we need to. I think that's what we were trying to do in the number one is make sure we told them why we're dinging them on that and we're letting other things be non-applicable. Because I think to some extent Renee and Bob's argument, when they kind of chatted with us a little bit before was effectively, you know, it's, it's doing no harm, therefore it's good and it's consistent. I mean, I'm putting words in their mouth, but you know, the whole do no harm thing. I don't, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, and I, I think the whole point that didn't adequately address it. So, yeah, you could say that putting in some traffic calming might improve something. But.
Two one seven, that's not applicable. Yeah, a air quality. There we go.
Again, not applicable.
Is eight not applicable or are we just kind of being cute? Okay, not applicable.
Again, we're not improving it.
Right. Protect and improve. Yeah. So in this case, again, it's not applicable because there's no expectation of applicability. Otherwise, we would hold them to the standard of trying to improve it.
Yeah, should we change these sentences? Are they okay as it is?
I think they're okay.
Just take out adversely.
Okay. Let's see.
Yeah. Plan will not.
Just say the plan will not.
Yeah.
All you can do is say road paving.
Can we almost steal one word for word here and just re-paste it? With maybe a modification or two.
All right, I'll copy this.
Because I really, I really want to hammer home that idea that this is a thorough plan and it was written and crafted as though it was. And that's why we can hold them to the standard. And, and so here, instead of saying does not provide for improved access to the canal, we could instead say improved access to coastal waters, public lands. I don't know, do we change that sentence a little bit?
No, I think we just talk about the canal.
Okay.
That's our, that's our water.
All right, so just leave it alone like that. Do you guys like the idea of just copying and pasting what was in one here? Because it's the same.
They're related.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just say so the analysis of LWRP's policies nine eleven says it's not applicable. And then we can get rid of that. So basically, we took what we did before and I just said I just added this.
Okay.
Because this says LWRP policy 11. This number 10 here, I think we said before, is the verbiage in here is merging things from nine and 11 and one.
Did we put LWRP policy 11? In I gotta look at our notes.
Our notes was LWRP policy 11 was not applicable.
Okay.
So promote sustainable use of living marine resources in coastal waters. So promote sustainable use of living marine resources in coastal waters was 11.
Why, why do we have LWRP policy 11 then? Right up by the number 10.
Because that's the code.
Combines 11 and nine.
I see, that's the code. All right, that's how the code wrote it.
This is how it's written in our code.
All right, very good. Thank you. Sorry, I thought we wrote that.
All right, I'd like to wind this down here. I think we don't have a whole lot left. So if we're doing that for this answer. Again, I think this one is not applicable. Let me go back to what we we can make some, uh, yes, visual quality and protect, the protect outstanding scenic resources.
Don't think it's
I see, I copied this from another document and forgot to update it.
Closed.
All right, yeah.
And then delete the first sentence. And then the first findings. And that'll be a copy and paste for 12 too.
No changes to historic resources.
Within the LWRP area. Oh yeah, that's good. All right, 13. Yeah, good. Yeah, 14 and 15 are both not applicable.
And 15 not applicable. Let me copy that, not applicable.
Yeah, so 14 and 15 both are not applicable.
Okay.
Justin, will you email this to all of us?
Yeah, should we put it in our, um, put it on the website too to discuss on Thursday? Can I have, put it in the published meeting packet?
Sure.
I mean, all documents we're discussing should be, you know, the public's supposed to have access to one.
Right.
Check number, comment on it, they can.
Justin, 14, you got to update. I think we were going to do the finding not applicable instead of written out like that, but it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, this was just copied and pasted from somewhere.
Yeah.
Isn't there some, isn't there some green print in the village? Or is it all town?
There's some protected lands in the village, but I don't think the village has adopted any of this.
Okay. I guess I thought some, uh, uh, land around, uh, the dairy. But maybe that's powers and maybe that's town.
Yeah. But then look like that. We don't know, uh, I don't know about the town portion of the plan, though we didn't look at that. Maybe I should just, should I delete the sentence? Do you have any other thoughts for what we should do?
You could skip giving them back what they've already told us and just say not applicable. Protective measures do not apply or something like that. Or.
I think there is a part of the green print in the village.
The village hasn't adopted the green print.
Okay, so even though it's on the map in the village, it doesn't really.
Jay.
Okay.
Hey, I'm in a meeting, can I?
Yeah, it's in the northeast there.
Okay, won't be too much.
Where Susan was indicating.
Finding, um, let's say, we'll just say the village portions.
Right. Just said to, to the village. No, that's fine, good.
I don't know what the town portions of the plan on.
Yeah. That's good.
Maybe we should just mention that, um, all of these comments pertain towards the plan in the village. I think we should put a call out to that since we're not looking at the town portions of the plan.
I, I think that's so, I think that's clear. But.
I think it makes, it's worth it to throw in a sentence and yourself a scroll up. Let me go back and we'll.
Well, that would, that would, that would suggest that at some point that's not true, but it's always true. Right? We're only ever doing an LWRP on village LWRP plan. So I, I think by saying that we're only addressing the village portion applicability, the LWRP is unnecessary because that's all we ever do. All right, somebody looks at the doc, they're going to know it's the village planning board addressing the village, uh, review of the ATP.
Yeah, I just think it's worth, um, worth making at least explicitly calling out.
I, no, just stop. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a little bit like stating the obvious, but just reinforcing it.
Okay, something to that effect. If anyone has any wording changes in the future, we can do that. All right, so I'm going to go down here to the end. Where were we? We were on the green print.
Here's one, you could take a shortcut and just say not applicable and not even have a sentence after it. Just say not applicable.
So just get rid of all of this.
Yeah, you don't even have to say to the village portion of the plan because that's what we're reviewing. So just say not applicable and then we don't have to get into any detail as to where the green print is or not. And on the number 13, Justin, can you just slide up to 13? Did we do 13 in a slightly different way? Finding the plan boards received. Yeah, that's it. Okay. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. So how about we forward this around, uh, Linda to add it to our agenda and if, whenever we we either vote on this in the near future or we don't. So we can, if we decide we're going to vote on it, we can amend it in the future.
Do we need to schedule a meeting in addition to the village board meeting that's getting scheduled? So theirs is at five o'clock? Is ours is at six o'clock?
Um, our meeting, uh, it sounds like it's a joint meeting at five o'clock right now.
So when that occurs, we can conduct any business we want in the same session. We don't have to have a separate session just for us.
Uh, no, I asked, I asked Linda to post this as a notice of a meeting of the planning board. If the trustees happen to schedule a meeting at the same time and it's a joint meeting, that's their business.
And that's how that works. Okay, so a joint meeting is both scheduling meetings of which they just happen to coincide. Okay.
Well, it should be announced as a joint meeting, but whatever. I think there's a few ways of doing it. I think it's, it's pretty clear. It should be clear.
I just wanted to make sure we cover our base.
But if the trustees publish a joint meeting notice and I ask them to put an agenda item on there and post it on the website, then Dorothy is just going to say no. If I have Linda post a meeting notice, um, that, and it's for our meeting, then I can set the agenda and put things in there.
Okay, and we're going to close open, uh, input sessions for the public right before we vote, right?
I don't have any presumption of what we're going to do with that. Oh, right before we vote, correct. I will keep the public hearing open until we're ready to vote on something.
Yes, okay, good.
At this point in time, um, we're done with this for now. We'll forward this around to everybody, forward it to Linda to post and, um, we'll, um, carry on discussion on Thursday at five. So I'll make a resolute, I'll make a, um, motion then to keep the public hearing of the review of the active transportation plan open. And we'll continue discussion on this and our findings on Thursday, uh, September 3rd at 5:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that all five members of the planning board voted in support of the motion. And like I said, I'll forward this around to everybody and Linda and ask her to post it. So I think that concludes business for now.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, thanks.
Great job.
Okay, we'll make a motion too during the meeting.
Uh, that's it.
Hey.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
That was all for unanimous. So we're ending the meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.